Next slide. So for a positive case, what we do is we look at the onset of symptoms. So onset of symptoms is considered day zero when calculating the date. So what we do is the individual needs to stay home through day five. They can return on day six as long as they are fever free without fever reducing medication for 24 hours. And don't have any new or increased symptoms. So we really want to make sure that those symptoms are under control. Reason being is on day six through 10, you can still be shedding the virus. We want to make sure there the fever is a really key one that we look at and any new symptoms. So individuals are allowed to come back through day six through 10 as long as they are masked. If an individual is not able to or unwilling to wear a mask, then we do have them stay home for the full 10 days and return on day 11. Next slide. For household close contacts, the recommendation of Monroe County Health Department is those that are unvaccinated or not current with their vaccination. It is recommended that they remain home for five days. So the day zero is the last close contact. And there's always the recommendation of a test on day five, and then they can return on day six. The recommendation is to wear a mask in the home as well as when they return is the recommendation of the health department. Next slide. Thank you. A question that we get frequently is what does it mean to be fully vaccinated? So full vaccination is when you've completed your primary series but are not eligible for the booster yet. Or you've received one booster. So if you're eligible for the booster, you've received that one booster, but you're not recommended to get the second booster. Or are not eligible for the second booster. So that's what's considered full vaccination. Next slide. And as always, most people know this at this point, but any COVID questions are always directed to Nurse Frost or myself. Some people even have our numbers on speed dial, I believe. So we are always open and willing to help families, employees, what have you. Through any questions or concerns that they may have. And if it's a question or concern, we can't answer, we always direct them right to the health department for support. Any questions?
I have one quick. So this is strictly for symptoms. So we have an asymptomatic individual that tests positive. When does that day zero start?
So asymptomatic test date is what it is. So when you test positive is the date we use for considered onset of symptoms for the isolation process. Thank you.
Additional questions?
I have an additional question. So obviously, yes, I totally agree. We want people to stay home if they're not feeling well. But are we, what accommodations are we making for students or employees who are staying home for longer than they normally would?
As far as instructional purposes?
For instructional purposes for for, you know, the dates that they're in school and then for if they're, do they have to use their vacation days?
Great question. So as far as instructional, we do, we're very fortunate within the district that we have for our younger grade seesaw. And then we have school logie. So we do have options that if students are out, that they can continue their learning virtually. So our teachers have done amazing jobs with making sure that that is available for our families that may struggle at home for different reasons. And that may not be an option for them. When the students return, our teachers are phenomenal and they will work to catch the students up when there is those situations where they're not able to work from home or complete some of those tasks. So there's always looking at what is essential for the student to know coming back? And what can we do to help support them in any learning gap that they may have had when they were out? As far as staff, I don't know if Mr. S, you want to take that piece?
We, we do have the telework. So if a staff member tests positive or needs to care for someone that is positive. And if telework is available, we will offer that telework as long they go through the building principal or the supervisor and go that way. If there are not telework eligible, they would need to take their paid leave. And then we would work through that process with that.
And what about attendance for students?
Attendance, they will be no counted. We need to go through those, but if it's, it's just like it's like a doctor's note, it's not counted. They're still responsible for the materials. There, I don't want to speak for each individual building, but they'll have a plan. And they'll be outlining those plans individually with families and with students when they come up. But as Ms. Koolig said, school logie at the secondary level. And then seesaw or the, the elementaries may have packet work or anything like that to keep them up to date as much as possible.
And to piggyback on that a little bit, we have specific coding that we use for COVID related absences. So if a building secretary hears from myself or Nurse Frost that an individual, we don't disclose the whether they're positive or close contact. But if we state that they're absent due to a COVID related situation, then they are excused as if it was a doctor note. So specifically coded and skyward that way.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no further questions, thank you very much. I'm sorry, before we leave that, help me to understand so that I understand fully. If the CDC changes the guidelines next week, that doesn't require action on the board. You, you just determined that we would follow those guidelines.
Correct, yep. So at this point, we take a look at the guidance. I will say typically there isn't a whole lot of difference between guidance as new things come out. It's just a change in wording, but if there's anything substantial, I will always make sure to make sure the board is aware and then communicate it out to our community and families.
Okay, thank you. Next report is the 2223 budget update, Ms. Hauser.
Thank you. So on the screen are the five funds that the board approves the budget for. Tonight we'll be focusing just on funds 10 and 27, which is our general upgrading funds. And on the next slide, the slides should look familiar to you. So just last month, we were on that final section on the right with the final budget revisions. Now we're into the next budget year, so we're in 2223. And so we're back to the beginning with a preliminary budget. So this is a budget that changes frequently between now and October as more additional pieces in the planning process become known. The original budget will be adapted in October. So this is a timeline, seven, eight, nine, 10, July, August, September, October. So we are in August or that gold section. So we're doing a preliminary budget review. We are continuing to update our revenue estimates, particularly as our enrollment numbers continue to come in. So we've had multiple families a day in district office filling out enrollment paperwork. We continue to receive open enrollment requests both in and out. And so that's really the biggest factor in the changes in our revenue and we're watching that nearly daily. And then the other big piece that continues to change is the salaries and benefits. And that's really as we're just confirming all of our staffing plan pieces. So we still have some openings that we're looking to fill. And as we fill those, we update those balances accordingly. Come September, that will be the critical moment for our official pupil count. And we will continue to look at that preliminary budget, particularly the tax levy and mill rate and what the will of the board is for presenting at the annual meeting. And then in October, when we get the certified property values and the certified state aid amount, we will have the final pieces of our budget and we will present that at the annual meeting and then adapt the lobby. So where we're at right now is a $43 million budget for revenue. And the pieces of this, the two red pieces are the revenue limit. So that darker red piece is state aid. The smaller lighter red piece is the revenue limit levy. So the piece of the total tax levy that's for operations. So you can see that the revenue limit makes up over 75% of our total budget. The next section is gray, that's also state aid and it comes in the form of per pupil aid. So it's additional dollars per student that we receive in state aid. And then the gold is other revenue, which would include other state grants, federal grants and any fines, fees, facility usage, charges, things like that. So this slide is a graphic with the revenue limit. It has a four year history and then the projections preliminarily for the 2223 year are the final column on the right. And so what this is showing is our total revenue limit in dollars. So you'll remember I just said that $43 million is our total revenue budget. And that final column on the right is showing about 31 and a half million is the revenue limit. The red bar shows how much of that revenue limit is funded by the local tax levy. And the gold is funded by state aid. The circle with the percentage, that's what percentage of our total revenue limit is state aid. So you can see this year, we have the highest in the past five years of our revenue limit that's funded by state aid at 86%. And again, that's due really to two main factors. One is our additional levy to prepay debt. And then the other are those additional funds that we received through those OPEB transactions that we put into Fund 46. So those two were large spending amounts that resulted in higher state aid this year. And so the calculation for the revenue limit, it's a pretty complex calculation, but you really can break it down into three big pieces. And so I just wanted to show you where our current estimates are at with those three pieces compared to where we were at last year. And the use, I will continue to update through the next couple of months. So the number of students for our revenue limit is actually a three year average. In my next slide, I'll get a little deeper into the pupil count. But we won't know this actual number until September. However, right now our projections are that we will be really close to where we were at last year with about 3,080 FTE or full time equivalent students based on a three year average. The funding per student is per the state budget. So we already know that since we're in the second year of the banium, which is $10,000 a student. For exemptions, the key change is that the operating referendum of 750,000, we do not have this year. And then that comes to that total revenue limit of about 31 and a half million dollars, which you can see is down from last year. And the amount it's down is about the amount of that grading referendum. So on the next slide, there's really three areas to kind of focus on here. The first is those smaller squares going across the top. And that's how enrollment is calculated. And so when we talk about enrollment, we really want to know which piece of enrollment we're talking about because the numbers are different. So headcount, which is that first red square is the number of students who are physically in our buildings. And we're providing education to within our walls in the district. OEN is open enrollment in. Those are kids who live outside of the Sparta school district boundaries, but choose Sparta schools to get educated in. Open enrollment out is that is it? They live within Sparta boundaries, but choose a different district to get educated. And so when we're looking at our pupil account for revenue limit or funding purposes, it's an adjusted pupil count in that you take the headcount. You subtract out the kids who don't live in Sparta. You add back the kids who do live in Sparta to get you to your resident student count. And then our pre-K or four year old kindergarten students get a proration or a partial FTE because they're not in school the full day. And then that's how we get to our total FTE. So that total FTE for revenue limit purposes, we then take and do a three year average for our funding. And so the bottom two boxes, the one on the left, that's our headcount and FTE comparison. So it's a four year history again with 2223 on the far right. And that's our projections for this year. So you can see headcount is the red and we're projecting out right now about a 70 student decrease in our total headcount or the kids who are within our buildings. However, once we factor in open enrollment in and out, our resident students is actually increased this year preliminarily by about 25 students. And so that's the number that we use for the funding. And if we look at a current year average of our FTE, which is the final chart on the right. I know the numbers are small, but basically what you can see is our three year average FTE has stayed relatively flat for the past several years. And that's what we're projecting continuing going into 2223. The next slide are the key factors in our state aid calculation. So this takes adjusted membership, which is our pupil count, but it's a year delayed. I apologize, that actually should say 2122 pupil count. So we do know that number at this time. Shared class again are the 2122 spending, which likely will not change since we've already completed our audit. And then the state funding at the secondary level, we're anticipating will increase this year. And so where that all comes down to is we're looking at over a million dollar increase preliminarily in our state aid funding. And that goes along with that chart I had talked about a few slides previously. And then if we go to the next slide where we put this all together, this is our total tax levy. So our tax levy is made up of three pieces. In the referendum talk, we talked about three buckets. This is the same thing. So our first bucket or first piece would be general operations and that's the part that's through the revenue limit. And so we talked, just talked about the revenue limit is less than last year by about the amount of the prior operating referendum. Our state aid increased quite a bit. And so what that is resulting in is a lower tax levy for general operations. We also have a tax levy for debt service, which is to pay down the debt on our buildings. We have the scheduled amount that's per our debt amortization schedules when we took out that debt. So that's in essence, the required amount. And that is $2,220,855. And we do know that amount. What we can talk about is if we want to do an additional levy or to prepay that, pay down our debt early. And that's a decision we'll have to make in October. So for the sake of discussion right now, I put in the same prepayment amount that we did last year. So if we levy the same additional amount, which is over 2.8 million dollars. The community service levy, we're still working through some budgetary figures with our winning program. But I did put it increased from last year to get to a total levy of 650,000. And that's mainly due to moving the middle school co-curriculars to the community service. And so what that all comes down to is a decrease for a total levy of 4.9 million versus 5.5 million last year. To get to our mill rate, you would take that total levy and you basically divide it by the property values within our community. I do have property values budgeted to increase. Typically, we increase in Sparta, the Sparta area about what the state averages. So this increases estimated low right now as compared to previous years. That's about a two and a half percent increase. We won't know the actual amount again until a little later. But based on that estimate, we would be looking at a mill rate with these variables of under $7 per $1,000 of property value. That being said, these are all preliminary, so I wouldn't go saying that's what it's going to be yet. And I also would recommend that we think about where we want our mill rate to be. So last year our mill rate was $8.29. The two years prior to that, it was $8.86. And so if any of you have questions about how that mill rate impacts future planning, I would encourage you either at some tonight or a future board meeting or even schedule a time to come in and talk with me and we can go through that together.
Mia, before you go on, would you go back to that slide? I'm a little confused about the total levy. I can see in actual, in prior year, actual how you came up with a 5.59 million. Binding the debt service and the community service. But I don't see how you came up with 4.95 million in the current estimate. What, what's that a total of?
Yep, I see what you're saying. Okay, that was before the debt service. I'll have to get you that actual number. If you look at the three buckets, those amounts are accurate. The total levy was without the debt service. Yeah, I would for tonight, look at the general operations, the debt service and the community service and then the mill rate. For tonight, if you could ignore that total levy role.
So the mill rate still is, is reflecting the totals of all the different levies. It's just the total levy number that isn't?
Correct, yep. I just brought up my spreadsheet to confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay. And so then going on to expenses for the expenses. These budget categories align with the format that I present the budget to you. And our expenditure budget is also 43 million. So that matches the revenue budget again preliminarily. You can see salaries and benefits make up about 72% of our total budget. Then we also have our school budgets, our instructional services budget, student services, business services and governance. Business services encompasses our transportation, our technology, our buildings and grounds, our capital improvements, our insurance. So there's a lot of pieces in there that go to the general operations of the district as well. And if we go to the next slide, I have shown the changes that we've worked through over the past several months in each of the budget categories. So salaries and benefits, even after the salary adjustments that we've done for DPI and things of that nature, we're still looking at a decrease of over $600,000. Part of that's due to some reductions in positions that we've worked through due to attrition or staff leaving and the, the hiring of new staff. Some of that is due to middle school co-curriculars moving to Fund 80. And then also, if you recall, we restructured our health insurance and we changed health insurance vendors, which also resulted in a savings. Our school budgets, we're looking at a decrease of 80,000. We reduced building budgets by 30,000. We also moved all remaining staff conferences to Title II A, which is a grant. And the middle school co-curricular supplies and transportation budgets are also moving to Fund 80. For the academics budget or instructional services budget, we're looking at a decrease. And this is really all in the federal grants. So it's how we're utilizing our federal grants this year as compared to last year. Same thing with student services, it's tied to those grants. And on the next slide, operations and finance, we're looking at a decrease of over 1.1 million. We have decreased the spend for the buildings and grounds upgrading budget. Our long range capital projects, we're planning to do out of Fund 46 as we've previously talked about. We reduced our software and purchase services class. We do not have budgeted or transferred to Fund 46 at this time. That's typically a decision we make more towards the end of the year. Our open enrollment out is projected to increase. Our technology budget, we moved some to the grants, which would be reflected in that academics budget. Our teachers on call, we went through that as a cabinet group and determined how our substitute usage will be this coming year. And then our utilities budget, we do have quite high rate now, just with many of the unknowns in the utility and gas world. And then the budget for superintendent and board of education has a decrease largely due to some changes in software and purchase services. And then we go past. Are there any other questions? And I'll follow up to the board and our weekly notes with the tax information. So those mill rates were reflective of my total is, but I'll follow up.
Thank you for doing that. Any questions for Leah or Ms. Hauser?
I have a question or a comment, more like a comment. The preliminary enrollment slide, I think it's slide 21. I just wanted to thank you for that. I think it's really clear and explains to everyone how that full time enrollment number comes, you know, or that three year average rather comes to be what it is. The only thing I might like to add and ask you if this is correct. When you do the proration, you mentioned the kindergarten students because they're not full time. It's a percentage, but I think that we also include summer school in that, is that correct?
You are correct, yep.
So that makes it even more clear, understanding that those students count toward that full time.
Yep, good point. I'll add that clarity to future slides.
Thank you, thank you so much.
No further questions?
I just have one comment. Thank you very much, Ms. Hauser for the, the report. If you do have questions, please reach out to Ms. Hauser. Ms. Hauser is not going to be available two weeks from now. So you're going to get a bridge version that I will be presenting. So just a heads up. So, but if you do have questions, please send them our way earlier, the better so we can get those out and maybe do some slides and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hendricks, I just want to say thank you again for, yeah, the slide 21. It's phenomenal to see our FTE to be estimated above the last four years. So that's exciting to see.
Very good. We'll move on to business items. Item A, discussion and possible recommendation to approve the updated High Point contract under consent.
As when Dr. Burnett's walking up here earlier, we did approve the High Point charter agreement for the next five years. However, going through that process, through the final versions with DPI, we found some things that we needed to change. So Dr. Burnett?
Thank you. Just one thing really, in the original approved contract, there were several areas that said, excuse me, that we would implement an interview process for enrollment in High Point. We can't do that with charter schools. So the DPI just asked that we removed the interview process. We're welcome to do it as part of the actual registration process, which is what we'll do. So in the language that you have, the sentence will just change to final admission to Sparta High Point Charter School will be based on a lottery period. So we're just taking out the interview portion. Any questions?
In board notes is the final language, just in the admissions part.
Any questions for Dr. Burnett? If not, the open promotion.
Mr. Hendrick said, make the recommendation to amend the current approved contract to match the required language per DPI as presented and placed under consent.
A second. If a motion by Mr. Scholz and a second by Mr. McKenna and further questions? If not, all in favor?
I, I opposed.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burnett. Item B, discussion and possible recommendation to approve the Innovation STEM Academy expansion grant.
We're very excited to bring this grant to the board for tentative approval to the full board. We're going to go through some slides, but we're very fortunate to have Mr. Erickson, the ISA president, along with Mr. Amundson, one of the faculty members in ISA. So just to explain the grant a little bit and what our role is as SASD and some positives for the grant. So the purpose, as Mr. Erickson stated earlier, is that we're expanding. Next slide, please, Mr. Skirman. Per the agreement with the DPI, we need to rate, we need to increase by at least 20 students. And as Mr. Erickson said, our waiting list is very long. So we're not anticipating increasing 20 students for grades six through eight, which they currently serve. This will increase opportunities. This is a lottery system. So it will increase opportunities for kit, for students. And in the lottery system, it is a true lottery. It doesn't, it's not based on any other criteria. It is just all random and is computer generated. At the end, Mr. Amundson, if there's questions about that, can, can address those. Work to close the gaps. Work to close the gaps. ISA's goals and data is looking to close those gaps to make sure that they have the best preparation and to meet the demands of their, the college and career readiness standards that we will be moving through. Their hands-on approaches through science, technology, engineering and mathematics lend itself very well for many post-secondary careers. And it's increased in staff development, staff development and staff training programs both focused in on academic and career advancement and planning. Next slide, please. Various world experiences with opportunities, more autonomy and voice and choice through additional technology, additional items. And remember, they're a project-based learning school where the students work with the teachers or the advisors and come up with the best project they feel. However, there is parameters, so there is fences, but there's a lot of latitude within those fences and guidance and standards and prerequisites. And it's interdisciplinary. They're learning math, science, social studies, the electives, and their interests as well throughout their project-based learning. And a lot of hands-on opportunities, bringing in guest speakers and local businesses and community agencies to really explore their options. Just a brief overview. Next slide, please. This was a long time in the waiting, actually a year ago in twenty twenty-one, they tried for it, but they did not get it. So but they re- rewarded the grant, reworked it, and we rewarded this grant in May? April, May? June, April, May, June, June for that. And since in June, I can tell you the staff in ISA, I've gone through training. Mr. Erickson's gone through training. Mr. Sanders has gone through training. This is all requirements of the grant that we've gone through some professional development during that time. And the kind of the timeline, like we talked about. This year, if awarded, will be considered the planning year. And professional development, purchase some classroom equipment and start that process, as Mr. Erickson said, for establishing who that additional FTE will be for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. There is some professional development for that person if they're selected in-house or out-of-house. So we're going to be working together on what that professional development would look like. And the cost of substitutes in the professional development are covered through the planning grant and the expansion grant. And then in twenty-three to twenty-five, the last two years of the grant, it is continuing the professional development, buying technology and interactive material and really curriculum development enhancing. I should have stated that when we originally applied or ISA originally applied for the grant, it was a five-year grant. We were awarded the grant and then the DPI, I'm not going to pretend I know why, changed it to the three years rather than the five years, same amount of money, but not spread out over a five-year period, over a three-year period. ISA went back, reworked the the information they needed and compressed the grant into a three-year process, and that was approved. Funding, as I stated, three years, about six hundred fifty thousand dollars for purchase of operational supplies, our operational services, supplies and professional development. And it does have a lot of positives for the district. You know, including, you know, more students have access and that sort of thing. And the additional funding for the one FTE will come from the Sparta Harry School District. We are committed, assuming that we're approved the grant, that we are committed to funding that one point oh FTE for the duration of ISA, as long as they meet the numbers within their grant. I'm sorry, within their grant and within their charter agreement. That has to be sustained, so if numbers would fall, we would look back at that charter agreement and move forward. So but we're very confident and we're very excited to bring this grant to the the board of for consideration. And Mr. Erickson or Mr. Amundsen, would you like to add anything? Besides that.
I can add one little thing. The reason that they switched it from a five to a three-year is because they're trying to align with the next federal grant opportunity. So that's why they condensed it so that they can get online, get in line with then applying for another federal grant through the state and proceed.
Thank you.
I have a question. I remember a couple of years ago, Mr. Amundsen, the ISA bought a three-D printer. What is your plan for classroom equipment with this grant?
With the grant, we can purchase. Oh, boy. Yes, we could purchase three-D printers. But what we did this year was the, our LMC has, I believe, five three-D printers in it, so we borrowed those. We purchased a laser cutter, which is about twenty thousand dollars. That's a piece of equipment I think we use a lot more than we use with the three-D printers. We use Burner or LabQuest, they're called, and we can purchase up to twenty of those. So if we, if we expand by twenty students, we can purchase, we could purchase twenty laser cutters if we wanted to. Now, obviously, we're not going to, but we could buy the LabQuest, one for each student, understanding that the other sixty or seventy other students can use those. So when it comes to equipment and technology, pretty much anything that we deem necessary for the classroom, that those twenty students would need. So if we've got a classroom set of telescopes or microscopes, we can add a handful more of microscopes, so that every one of the students that needs microscope could have a microscope. We have the La Crosse Area Astronomy Association comes in every three years. They put up their telescopes in the back, in the backyard. We, ISA has one telescope right now. We can purchase a couple more telescopes so more of our kids could participate in that and and do those activities. The grant will also allow, we do lots of field trips. It was, it was awesome last spring to be able to, you know, put the wheels back on the bus a little bit. We took the kids to the Twin Cities. We took the kids to UW Madison. We took the kids over to Planetarium at UDL. Seems like we went a couple other places. I mean, it was just a lot of, but that's seventy kids. Now, if we have ninety kids, we're not going to put ninety kids on one school bus, so this grant will allow us to to rent or purchase the services of another school bus, so that we can take those extra additional kids with us. So as far as equipment, yeah, pretty much anything that we need, that we deem necessary, that those extra twenty kids would need to be, so that they could be successful in our classrooms.
Thank you, sir.
So there's a lot of, there's a lot of leeway with that. Please know that Mr. Sanders and the team is in in conjunction with us. So if they want to buy twenty-five laser engravers, they would say, well, wait a minute here, we don't have the the room and and that sort of thing. So it's a real collaborative effort to make sure that their technology is with ours and the current. So it's a collaborative effort, but pretty much the sky's the limit, as long as we can collaborate and agree to it and make it reasonable moving forward, because this is one-time funds. So if we buy those twenty-five laser engravers and one goes down, we have to make sure that we have the funds to to fix them.
Ms. Amundsen, the grant description mentions educationally disadvantaged students and closing the education gap. Educationally disadvantaged, are we talking students with an IEP or how do you define educationally disadvantaged?
I'll be honest. My three coworkers wrote this grant. Mrs. Branks, Mrs. Lakowski, Mrs. Poff. They're the ones that wrote the grant. They're the ones that took the time. I was just kind of a, they needed to work on it. I covered the classes. I was the cheerleader, if I need to get, you know, get them talking. So when it comes to some of that stuff, and I, and I believe in discussions with DPI, the the list of ten things that you saw there, DPI has asked us actually to cut that down to four. And so Mrs. Branks went through that and she figured out what those four are. As far as is that, yes. So if we've got ELL students, yes. We want to be able to to get them, we're not, a perfect example is the first year that we were open, we had three or four ELL students. And when we took their tests, they came back that first year and they're at the four percentile. And our goal is to get our students to the eightieth percentile. Well, we're not going to take a seventh grader and move them seven, six points in two years. That would be awesome. What we are, you know, when we sat down, we discussed it, that student has barely, barely moved. We wanted to get them to eight percent, up to the percentile. Now, is that anywhere close to eighty percent? No, but it's starting to to fill in those gaps, that students, it's starting to get them in the right direction. Unfortunately, and this is 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 one of our struggles as a charter school. My wife works for Head Start and getting a hold, our conversations are, how do you reach the families that don't want to get reached? There are families that they'll see a telephone number on their phone that comes up that says permanent elementary, and they won't answer it because it says permanent elementary. They won't open the emails, they won't open the letters. And it's how do you reach those families? That's what we also want, are are really striving to figure out how to do. We want to attract all students, all learners, and and provide them a different educational opportunity. Not all, not all students are going to be, I I've always used my, my, my own kids to describe who works and who doesn't work. My son is an engineer. He would have failed at Innovation STEM Academy because he likes to be told exactly what to do. As a, as a teacher, they're going to go, what do you want? And I will make that for you. My daughter, who got a degree in in birth of three-year-old education, would have thrived because that's the way she learned. Don't tell me the answer. I'm going to give you what you, what you want in my way, and it's going to come with glitter. So that, those are the students that, you know, we we want to try to attract, those that learn differently and those that we can't reach right now, that we struggle to reach. And we want to get those services out there, and that's a gap. You know, and girls. I want more girls in my school. If I could have a lottery that's, you know, that guarantees me fifty percent of the of the student body and being girls, I would do it, but you know, DPI has the rules that say you can't do that. I would do that. We we want to to make sure that girls see that STEM is a viable field also. So that's another gap. If we want to look at gaps that we want to close, that's a gap, but we want to close. I need to stop talking.
I actually appreciate you talking with us, but I, I guess the question I had, so DPI has specific requirements. Not saying fifty-fifty when it comes to male, female, so on and so forth. As far as your waiting list, do you have, is it fifty-fifty? Is it more weighted towards males? What would you say generally that that looks like?
I'm going to say it's, it's pretty fifty-fifty. When we do recruit, I, you know, it's, I have posters put up in the girls bathrooms over here. Yeah, fifth grade still over here. Because I want, you know, the boys are going to get there because boys see STEM, they see the word engineer, and they think automatically that's them. Girls see engineering, they kind of go, wait a second. So I, I personally put advertisements in there to, you know, to try to convince girls. It was fun this last summer working at STEM Camp, and a lot of the of the participants are girls. And I encouraged them to to apply. I worked at Space Camp this last week. I would say of the twenty students, I would say probably eight or nine of those were girls at Space Camp. And I, you know, sit down and encourage them, talk to them about applying. Just to, and then when we get guest speakers, I always, I shouldn't say I, we always look for female speakers. So when we do meteorology, it was Michelle Padell and then Alyssa Triplet, and now they've both moved on, so now I've got, we need to find another female meteorologist that wants to come in and speak to our students. Veterinarians, we want, you know, we try to get as many role models for our, for girls as we can get.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Other questions? I I have one more. And appendix D, the performance measures. I don't know if that, if there's a slide for appendix D. Yeah, so that it has the different measures. Performance measures. So as an example, measure one, seventy-five percent of students will achieve above and all that in the forward example. So then it goes year one, sixty-four percent, year two, sixty-six, year three, sixty-eight, and so on. One, my first question is, what is year one? It certainly wouldn't be the first year of the grant, right? Because you haven't, you have an.
Year one, I believe, is going to be the year.
The year two?
Of the grant, yes.
Okay.
So when we wrote those, we were under the assumption that it was going to be a five-year grant. And as Mr. Erickson explained, that DPI wants to apply for another charter school grant in year, so it's a three-year grant, so we've got a, we had the kind of, I shouldn't say we, Mrs. Branks, Phil Branks, started condensing things out. So year one would be twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
No, that that makes sense. That's why there's four years here, and the fourth year was crossed out, which actually would be the fifth year. Thank you.
Yep.
If there are no other questions, I'm open for a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
So what happens after the three years are up? Are we able to apply for this grant again? Is this going to be, or is this a one time and then we're have to maintain the facilities and supplies and things? What does that look like?
So we had a meeting with Wirth, which is the Wisconsin Charter School Resource Services Center. And last week, and that was one of the questions I was brought up. I, what I got from that conversation that we had that afternoon was, yes, if we want to, then again, expand in whatever year that would be, we could do that. And based on our, on our waiting list and how many kids apply, we usually get about forty-five, roughly fifty students apply for our school every year. So ideally, we could have a hundred and fifty students at Innovations, which is way too many, in my opinion. I I believe we could. And and then how many students you add is part of the grant. I believe we had to add at least twenty students or a percentage of how many students we had to make to satisfy the grant as far as expanding. Yes.
So a new grant would would not be a maintenance grant. It would have to be an expansion grant, so it wouldn't really cover the ongoing costs.
And I'll, and I'll, you know, tip my hat to Teresa Lakowski and Dana Hop. They are constantly writing grants. I think on top of the money that we've got, and I think Innovations has brought in another fifty thousand dollars with the grants for our school and for our students.
Any additional questions?
I guess I have a comment then. So I'm very excited about this grant. I love the idea of ISA. I think it's a phenomenal program. I'm glad that the district is committed to maintaining that full-time teacher beyond the three years. But I guess we do have to talk about what Mr. Burns Gilbert was talking about, the maintenance costs of the program. Do we have any idea what that might be and how the district would need to absorb that or bring that into our budget?
Well, I can share this with you. So our first grant ran out five years ago. So everything that we have done since then has been either based off our per people grant that are funding that we get from the district, grant writing that the staff does, and fundraising that the kids do. And then, and then sometimes we've had families that have given us donations of money and equipment. So we, as far as maintaining and keeping the the school going, there has never been any of the costs above and beyond from their expectations from the school district.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you.
In fairness, the larger the, larger the school gets, the harder it is going to be to maintain without outside help, I would think.
As far as.
The maintenance cost four years from now will be higher than the maintenance cost today.
Equipment-wise, the classroom.
You'd have twenty more kids to supply.
But we'd also get the additional funding for those twenty students from the building. So if we get eighty dollars per student or whatever it is, we would get that extra fifteen hundred dollars for our classroom, to operate our classrooms.
I as well, I'm very excited. Mr. Erickson, please tell the governance board, thank you for all the time and effort they've put in. Same to your staff, the cooperating staff that have writing the grants and a part of all of this. Thank you so much for that. Mr. Hendricks, with that, I will make a recommendation to the full board to approve the Innovation STEM Academy Expansion Grant and place it under consent.
I will second that.
Thank you. It cannot be under consent because of the expense, but.
Absolutely, that's, that's just fine.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Scholz and seconded by Ms. Prestwood. Any further questions? Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Sorry, it's going to be a roll call. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Moving to item, thank you very much. Moving to item C, discussion and possible recommendation to purchase a new lawnmower for Herman Elementary out of referendum funds.
I was talking to Leah and she said we still have some referendum funds available and she asked me if I had any equipment needs and I do. I do need another wide area mower. It's part of our long-range plan. We are also mowing more of Herman than what we had planned to, which I, the grounds look awesome, so I, I really don't want to cut back on the mowing. But we do have, currently have three mowers in our fleet. We have a tw- twenty, or nineteen ninety-nine Toro, a twenty-eleven Toro and a twenty-sixteen John Deere. This replacement was on our long-range plan. And we kind of pushed it out, but it, we had more repairs than I anticipated this last year. And obviously, I'd really like to get rid of our nineteen ninety-nine mower. It's past its prime, but basically, the reason we have three mowers is when we have a equipment breakdown or routine maintenance, then we still keep our two district mowers going. We have two, we have two mowers hired, both of them work roughly twenty hours per week. A, a question was raised as to overtime, there is not overtime. You may see them mowing on the weekend, but it is not overtime. They choose to mow on the weekends so that they can keep on top of our grounds. They, they do it at, because they're looking out for the district, not for their own game. I guess what I'm looking for is to get rid of the nineteen ninety-nine mower and replace it with a new mower. And then we'd be using the twenty-eleven Toro as our backup mower. So when, if the, a mower is down because of repairs or routine maintenance, sharpening the blades or oil change or that sort of thing, our mowers can keep on going. Next slide. I got, there's three players basically for wide area mowers. There's Jacobson, Toro and John Deere. The Jake's, Jacobson, I got a quote with government pricing for seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. However, if we order that today, we will not see it until the winter of twenty twenty-four. And the Toro, if we, I was quoted on August fourth, I believe, and that as of that day, the price was eighty-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. They will not hold that price. Depending on when that order is placed, it could go as high as ninety-four thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. And we will not be able to get it until late summer of twenty twenty-three or possibly early fall. John Deere, which is the last one we just purchased, I've been in contact with Chris from Tacker Central in West Salem. He anticipates twenty twenty-three pricing sometime this month. And as far as production goes, he anticipates we could have it in the spring of next year. So we would have, we, we'd actually get the mower the earliest with the John Deere. And I don't have, like I said, I don't have pricing yet, but I anticipate it to be less than the eighty-six thousand dollars. Next slide, please. So my goal is to get the mower as soon as possible for the most reasonable cost. I'm recommending that not to exceed the eighty-six thousand for the Toro and I am hoping that by the, the meeting on August twenty-third, that I will have a price for the John Deere, which I anticipate being in the seventy thousand range.
Questions for Mr. Prom?
So what was the price that you said that the John Deere might be?
I believe it'll be in the seventy thousand range, but with the supply chain issues, I just, I don't want to promise, throw out a number there because they have not guaranteed me a, a price yet. They said they should be able to get me one this month. And they said if we place the order this month, that, yes, there are supply chain issues, but they'd be, do their best to honor that price.
And would you say that that Toro, either as a brand or as a model, not just that it's the best price and you'll get it soonest, but it will also hold its value over the longest period of time? Or can you make that?
I think you said Toro. Did you mean the John Deere?
No, 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 no. I am kind of jumping back and forth questions, because he recommends the Toro, right?
No, I'm recommending the John Deere. But, but I'm giving that price because realistically, that's the price we have to work with right now. Because I don't have a John Deere price, so what I'm saying is we wouldn't exceed the price of the Toro. And my hopes is that the John Deere will come in under that.
We're looking not to go above the Toro, the eighty-six thousand. We're looking, so if, once we get John Deere, we'll be able to evaluate the price and most likely, based on Lowell's past information, it's going to be less than the eighty-six. And if we can get it quicker, we're probably going to do that. So it gives us some flexibility not to exceed the eighty-six thousand. And we'd be able to determine the best course of action. Because delivery of February twenty twenty-four versus the delivery of early fall twenty twenty-three, I'm guessing there's maybe one or two moments.
Ms. House, what's the deadline for spending out these referendum funds? Then at some point, they have to be moved, right?
Yeah. So we have about one point one million dollars left of facility referendum funds that haven't been spent. The first initial date is two years after the date of borrow, which is August of this year, so we're in that timeframe. What happens after that timeframe is I need to work with Baird to make sure that we're not earning too much interest, more so than the interest that we're spending. So it's not that we have to have the funds spent, but there's an extra step for me for monitoring those funds to make sure that we stay in compliance.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Todd, you asked quality-wise, I consider, these are the three major manufacturers. There's no one else that makes them quality-wise. I, it's kind of a horse apiece. I mean, whether you buy a Kia or Hyundai or Ford, they're all good quality.
And so I guess I'm not quite understanding the sentence. Whenever, and just because the recommendation is the John Deere, whenever we anticipating that gets shipped? Is that supply chain confusion or is there just a?
They just, they did not, John Deere, because of supply chain issues, they did not produce any twenty twenty-two wide area mowers. And that's kind of the problem. There's more demand for these wide area mowers than there is production. And that's why Jacobson is backed out so far and Toro's backed out so far. John Deere is catching up with production and they, they said that we more or less can count on it having it in the spring. And the other two manufacturers can't make that promise.
Just to be clear, we're not picking a brand right now. They're all very high-quality. We're waiting for that John Deere Colt, hopefully in by the twenty-third, so we can give you an update where we're at. Because our goal is to get on that, to, to purchase this, so we can get on the list of some sort, one of the three lists. But we're not to exceed the eighty-six thousand is our recommendation.
So is there an advantage to making a recommendation tonight or can we just move this to the full board? Without recommendation to make the decision at the full board or does that hamstring some effort on your part?
Well, they all said the same thing. The sooner we get that order placed, the better. So I would like to be able to tell John Deere, hey, on the twenty-third, I will be able to tell you actually on the twenty-fourth that you can go ahead and place the order. Meanwhile, they tentatively hold my spot. And I, I have to, I always explain to the contractors or vendors that it's not official until I have school board approval. But if for some reason, the board changes their mind on the twenty-third, we could take her name right off the list. But I would like to have my name on the list, so, because there's actually some orders being placed right now. And the sooner I get my name on there, the more likely that I'll have one in the spring.
So is there a motion?
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Yeah.
Lowell, do you have any idea how much the cost of this mower has gone up in the last year due to the supply chain issues?
We bought our twenty sixteen John Deere for forty-five thousand, nine hundred.
So is this the best, I know we have the funds, but is this the best time to buy a mower?
We need it. I mean, I.
I guess define need. We have three that'll operate.
We've had more repairs than we've ever had before this last year and it was on our long-range plan. I had anticipated replacing it before now, but because of our failed referendum and limited funding, I was hoping to push it off further. That is just not really feasible.
That's fair. So which mower is it that you're having the issue with?
The, the, both of the Toros. Basically, both of the Toros have been out of service for different periods of time this summer. So I have not had two.
That's the two thousand eleven and two thousand sixteen?
No, the twenty-sixteen's a John Deere. What I want to do is get rid of the nineteen ninety-nine, that it, it really shouldn't be in service anymore. And I'd like to sell it, get some value out of it, but it, it's down for repairs more often than it should be, as well as the twenty-eleven. I'd like to have something more reliable where the twenty-eleven is more of a backup versus a daily use mower. And right now, the twenty-eleven's a daily use mower, but the nineteen ninety's been new, nineteen ninety-nine Toro's been used more this summer than it's ever been used before, between repairs and routine maintenance.
Do you have any idea of value of those mowers?
I would anticipate we'd get probably somewhere around five thousand for the ninety-nine.
Okay, now I'll ask for a motion.
Oh, I, I do have one more question. So Mr. Prom, did you say that two mowers were down at the same time this summer?
We, we were, at times, we've only had one, at times, we've only had the ninety-nine moral Toro running.
The ninety-nine is the one that seems to be running.
Well, well, we, we, we've had different issues. Some, someone, I don't know who did it, but someone threw rebar on our soccer field and our, that's our John Deere mowers. And so it tore up the, the, all the blades, but you know, that, that takes it out of service for a couple of days, obviously, but normally, the ninety-nine Toro should not be used regularly and this past summer, it's been used way more often than what I'd like to see. And the twenty-eleven mower is now, you know, eleven years old as well. I'd just like to see something more reliable and if we, and it's kind of that, everyone thinks of the twenty-sixteen as the new mower, which it is, but it's, you know, seven years old now. Just like this building, up until Herman was built, people always called Meadowview the new school. Well, it's the newest school, but it's not exactly new anymore. It's actually twenty years old.
Do you have any idea how many hours you're putting on a mower in a year?
I can find that out for you. But there, I can tell you, there, both mowers are probably used about four days per week. But it just depends on, right now, we're browned out a little bit. But the last few years, normally, we have some period of time where the grass kind of browns out. The last few years, we've had, seems like more rain than normal. I guess I'm not weatherman, so I don't know that for sure, but it seems like the grass is always growing.
I'm not trying to drill you. We've just spent four months trying to pinch every penny possible and seventy grand seems like an awful lot for a lawnmower.
I understand that. And I, and honestly, I, I don't have a crystal ball. I, I don't know when these supply chain issues are going to settle down, but I don't see an end in sight right now.
Mr. Prom, I just want to say that I really appreciate everything that the lawn's, the lawn crew does, that the, your entire department. I'm so impressed with everything I've seen and I appreciate that. I'm struggling with the thirty thousand dollar price increase over the last seven years. Especially if we do have three, I don't think our, do we know what our repair costs have been?
We had replaced the engine on our twenty-eleven Toro and that was about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, that's a good chunk.
So you need to think of the wear and tear because of breakdowns and, and such as well. So I understand it's a, it's a steep price to pay, but when we're, when we have mowers down and they're being utilized in other ways that wouldn't normally be utilized if we have a good product out there, it makes a difference, so.
There is also inefficiency. We're paying two part-time people, no benefits, and they're keeping up with the entire acreage of the district. If we could put them on a sixty-inch mower, well, they'd be working a hundred and twenty hours a week and not keeping up.
And one of the things we hear about is that our grounds are looking good or not so good.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to have, to recommend to the full board the John Deere mower, as long as it doesn't exceed the eighty-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars and thirteen cents to purchase that John Deere mower.
Mr. Wells, if I could, could we make the recommendation to, not specific to a brand, but just that not exceeding that amount?
Oh, sure.
Would that be all right?
Okay, that's a friendly amendment.
And I would recommend if someone else wants to do another amendment, the paid through the referendum funds.
I will make that amendment as well.
Friendly amendment, then we don't have to vote on it. Okay.
Perfect.
Mr. Burns Gilbert, you seconded?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Wells and a second by Mr. Burns Gilbert to purchase a new lawnmower not to exceed that amount and it will come out of referendum funds. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Prestwood?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
No.
Mr. McKenna?
No.
Mr. Burns Gilbert?
Yes.
Motion carried five to. Thank you, Mr. Prom. Uh, next item, discussion and possible recommendation to purchase a hoist at Meadowview Middle School for floor mats to be paid through Fund Forty-Six.
These would, there'd be a hoist that would be able to hold two full sets of wrestling mats, the lightweight mats. There's seven, six-foot sections and one mat or one wrestling mat. And this year, we do not have, we have a hoist at Herman, we have a height hoist at the high school for the wrestling mats. And just honestly, there's, with, when we're doing wrestling, there is no good place to put them. There, if they're not up out of the, out of the, off the floor, people are, we're constantly moving around. You know, basketball and wrestling are sharing the same space. And it was a problem last year here at Meadowview. You, you roll up the mats and we don't have any place where we can store them outside the gym. There's no equipment storage, no storage rooms. And we have people tripping over them and you, you're just constantly fighting them. And it, it's, it caused some personnel issues as well last year. So I am looking to get, I got three quotes and I'm looking to get approval for Matt Hoist for nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars plus the electrical, which is about two thousand, and there may be a possible engineering fee, but I work with multiple different architects. I believe that that would be a minimal cost, but I want, I need to have someone sign off whether we attach it to the wall. We have one space in the gym where we could do a wall mount, or otherwise we attach it to the trusses. And I got three quotes, one from Alco, one from Matt Hoist and one from Southern Minnesota. Southern Minnesota was actually the only one that came on site and I asked them to give me a quote. Southern Minnesota was actually the only one that came on site, and I asked them to give me a, a quote or, you know, to refine their quote, but they did not get back to me in time.
And I just want to clarify with the funding, uh, we're asking that this would come out of fund forty six. So if you recall at the last board meeting, uh, the board did put four hundred thousand dollars into fund forty six for capital improvements in the twenty two, twenty three school year. The majority of that is being used for the chiller at the high school, uh, but there will be some funds left over, and Mr. From and I both went through the long range plan, and this is our recommendation for the next most urgent. We have had workers' compensation claims regarding wrestling mats. Um, they really do um, need a safer way to be stored, and this would be similar to what we installed at Herman. So knowing what we knew and we did Herman, it's appropriate that we do that proper storage at Meadowview as well.
And this, this absolutely is an ergonomic and safety issue from, um, a district standpoint here, so. Uh, just to keep that in mind, and Ms. Hauser, uh, as far as the, the fun forty six money, is this um, taken into consideration that we have a high school auditorium that needs work done? I mean, this isn't going to affect those funds, correct?
You are correct.
Thank you.
And one other thing to add, um, we did go with a recommendation on the slide is, is that we did go with the heavier motor, uh, it comes with a ten year warranty. Um, rather than if we went with a smaller motor, it has a five year warranty, so. Um, to, we felt the recommendation should be, let's do the, the heavier motor, the longer life, and hopefully we'll get more than ten years out of it.
That was my next slide, but thank you, Sam.
Any further questions for Mr. From?
Mr. From, these are the mats that the kids are always climbing on and playing on when there's after school basketball and all of that, right? So I imagine that it's not only the district that we have to be concerned about, but the community as well.
Well said, yeah.
And if you remember at the old AC building, we had mats all over, uh, the Parks and Rec used that for wrestling. And we had issues there. We had a workman's comp claim there. It, for the roughly twenty thousand dollars, I think it's well worth it. And I, the only choice, or Sam and I both recommend the nineteen thousand, but the fifteen thousand eight hundred, that's the lesser motor with the lesser warranty. We both feel that that extra four thousand for peace of mind and the, the more robust motor is worth spending that money now versus having issues down the line.
So do we require a not to exceed amount here? I mean, if, or, or just a, an approval? Okay.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I will make that motion to go with, to recommend to the full board to go with the math waste nineteen thousand dollars two hundred and thirty eight. Uh, voice system from Meadowview Middle School, paid through fund forty six.
I will second that.
There's also, ju- just so we're clear, we have an additional electrical, yes, we have the two thousand, and then there, there may be a, a minor engineering fee that I don't anticipate to be more than, say, about five hundred dollars or so.
So I, I had the number of twenty two thousand two hundred and thirty eight.
I will amend my motion as stated.
Twenty two thousand.
Two hundred and thirty eight.
We have a motion by. We have a motion by Ms. Presswood, seconded by Mr. Schultz, to recommend to the full board, the Matt Hoist, uh, not to exceed twenty two thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars. Further discussion, I want to be paid for, through fund forty six. Further discussion?
I do have one question that I just thought of. Ms. Hauser, do we remember how much they cost when we put them in at Herman? No, okay, that's fine.
I, I can answer that. Uh, we had budgeted thirty five thousand for this based on what the, if the cost was at Herman. I can't tell you exactly, but we based the thirty five thousand off of what it cost at Herman, so I would say we're actually doing it cheaper than Herman.
Thank you.
There are no other questions. We will have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Presswood?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Burns Gilbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. From. Discuss, uh, item E, discussion and possible action to give a monetary bonus to classified staff for the twenty two, twenty three school year. Mr. Russ?
Yes, if you recall, uh, last year during the twenty one, twenty two school year, uh, the Board of Education granted a, um, we had a professional development day, uh, in the calendar, and the board said as a thank you that the certified staff would not have to report to work that day and still get paid. Well, it was brought, um, the, the board wanted to revisit it, uh, about how can we make classified staff give something similar than that we had with the certified staff? So, uh, some ideas we had as a director and superintendent group, uh, it to, what can we do to give that something similar to the classified staff? Once again, we're looking at classified right now, and as a, just a brief review, we have two types of classified staff. We have a school year only classified staff, which is usually um, nutrition services, uh, educational assistants, uh, some secretaries and some, uh, custodians, not too many custodians. And then we have year round, uh, classified staff, which are year round secretaries, custodians. Um, so those are the, the two groups that we have. So when we, they're all in the same employee group, so when thinking about some options, we, we have to consider how each one of is affected. So we just had a couple, uh, ideas as a director group. We're really not necessarily leaning towards one or the other, but just wanted to, uh, see how can we give a designated day in the calendar potentially to give the same benefit? Um, we looked at September thirtieth as a option, uh, September thirtieth is Friday, it's the end of the month. And, uh, two things, we could possibly grant that as an additional day uh, within the payroll, um, because school year employees do not work on that day. And so that would be a tenth day in their payroll cycle. However, the school year employees, I'm sorry, the year round employees would work that day. Um, so we have a couple of different options. One, we could give them the day off, totally. Or we could give them an additional day that they wouldn't have to necessarily work. So they would be considered eleven days in that ten day pay period. So it'd be very similar to the school year classified staff, that they weren't scheduled to, to, to work, but we would give them that day as a thank you. And then the year round staff, they would still work on the thirtieth if we wanted them to. And then we would give them that eleventh day for pay to do that. So those are some options, and maybe, uh, Ms. Hauser, Ms. Coolig or Ms. uh, Mansky might be able to explain it a little bit better.
Real quick, I, so I, I remember in one of our meetings where we had been talking, we thought there was a, was there a day in October and November where the buildings are completely closed? Everybody is gone for the day. That we could designate that day for all classified staff to receive a paid day. I'm trying to remember.
There, there was, we talked about November twenty third possibly, but that was just for school year staff, not full year staff. So besides holidays for year round staff, there's really not a, a, a day that, unless we tell them, nope, you're good to go, you can get a day with, with, with pay without showing up to work. But the one, the downside of that is, is I know, uh, Mr. From's team enjoys those no school days because they can get a lot done. On the flip side of that, so I don't want to speak for Mr. From, but they have big plans. When there's no kids there, they can do major projects.
Mr. Russ, was any consideration calculation done to giving all of the classified employees a personal day? And I realized that there is an expense related to subs for those people. But to me, that's more commensurate with what was done for the teachers because they, they didn't get extra pay, they just got a day off. Um, now, there will be in the, the expense of the substitutes, but on my assumption is it might be less expensive or a bigger headache. Was that discussed, that option talked about at all?
I don't think we discussed that option. Uh, the monetary amount would be about twenty thousand. Twenty to twenty five thousand, and then if you wanted to add the sub on top of that.
Um, so the sub cost would not be on top of it. It would be in, in, in place of it. If you gave them a personal day, an additional personal.
You're right.
Yeah, it would be, just be the sub cost, but I, I don't know how they, that compares. You might save, I'd save two thousand dollars, but have five thousand dollars worth of headaches. I don't, I don't know.
We have a sub shortage, um, which we have a hard time filling, not saying that we can't do that, and then the buildings would just have to absorb that. Uh, if we don't get a sub, um, but that's an option. And some questions came up. Have we asked the classified staff what they would prefer? We have not, because they're not coming back until, uh, technically, they're not coming back until August thirtieth. Um, and we'd have to be ready to, you know, if we survey them and say, hey, these are our options, uh, we'd have to be able to act, in my opinion, on all three of them if we asked what they would prefer. And then take the will of the group.
So, uh, kind of piggybacking off what John said, but not quite, because that was a contracted day for the teachers, and then they were able to have off. So on paper for the classified staff, wouldn't that mean that you, they would have off but still get paid that day? I think that's, I think that's.
Yeah, and I think that's where Mr. Hendricks was saying, that's where that personal day came in, that they can take, if they wanted to take September tenth off, for example, they would be able to do that because they'd have an additional personal day, not show up to work and still get that pay. Okay, that's what I believe is Mr. Hendricks is saying.
And, and I don't want to recommend or, or suggest anything that would cause disruption. You know, if it means that you end up with days without staff and all the headaches that come with that. I don't, I don't want to cause problems for people, but, and, and again, I don't know how much savings would be involved in having subs. So.
Um, Mr. From, you work with a number of classified staff. Do you have any idea or thoughts on what you think would be most beneficial or show the most gratitude towards the classified staff? I'm really sorry, it's three on the spot here, man, but I'm just, just wondering with all of the classified staff you work with, I would love your input on that.
And I'm sorry, Mr. From, before you answer that, can you please come to the podium so we can make sure we gather your thoughts for those who are viewing?
No, so we can make sure we blame you for.
I'm not setting you up for anything here.
I would say, and I didn't talk to anybody, but I'd say a personal day would probably be, work the best for us. And the staff are very cognizant of whi- which days affects the district. They would, I, and then we also, as management or supervisors have control over, so only so many people can take a personal day on any given day. So from my perspective, a personal day would work the best for me personally.
That's great. Thank you so much for that. I, I appreciate it. So, Mr. Hendricks, with that, I'm going to make a motion and we continue conversation, but I will make them.
Um, and I'm, I, I don't mean to stop your motion.
No, you're fine.
Like the, there, there's a different building perspective too, uh, from possible one of the principals with their hand up.
Please. Thank you, I didn't see that.
Nope, that's fine.
You're hard to miss, I don't, yeah.
Is your. Sorry, Mr. Attic, you turn your mic on.
There it's green.
Perk, how's that?
So, just saying, I think, I think what you guys are thinking about is very gracious. So some days that we don't have school coming up, that would work for me as a principal with our educational assistance would be September thirtieth. We don't have school. We, we don't have school on October twenty eighth. And I don't believe, well, we don't have school on the twenty third and twenty fourth and twenty fifth of November, and the twenty third would be like, like any of those three days for the EAs, so we can make do with auto maintenance staff or custodial staff a lot easier than, than our EAs. But my recommendation would be just pay them for September thirtieth, e- even though, even though they don't have to show up, I, just what I'm saying, so. So those are days in our school calendar that are are coming up quickly, that they may appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Attic. So i- if, uh, if I can make a motion, um, I would make a motion to provide an additional paid, personal day to be paid out to all classified staff on September thirtieth of two thousand twenty two. Does, would that, does that hit on everything?
Wouldn't need to be designated a personal day, it's just an additional day of pay. I think that there would be confusion if we call it.
Okay, no, absolutely, that's fine.
And then we would have, so that would be for the school year classified staff that you could, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you can make a motion that on September thirtieth, the school year classified staff be given a paid day that ness- they wouldn't necessarily get paid that day because they're not scheduled to work.
And I had just stated all, so whatever you, if you feel is best, I, I would be, I would feel comfortable with.
And then my, my additional recommendation would be to knowing that there's, they wanted to take a person later or not, but making sure that our projects are, are completed would be to grant an eleventh day of pay during the week, or the sixth day of pay during, uh, for the week of the sixth through the thirtieth. Ms. Hauser?
Another idea?
Yes.
Would be for school year only staff that September thirtieth, they would have as a paid day. So that would be your educational assistance, school year staff. For year round staff, they would get an additional personal day so that it can float to when is the best needs of the department. So we could say school year staff gets September thirtieth as a paid day. Year round classified staff gets an additional personal day.
Wendy, how we doing over here?
That, that was your original motion?
That was what I said. You're talking about, yeah, so, uh, I will make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Ms. Presswood, that year round staff be given the additional personal day, school year classified staff will be, uh, will have September thirtieth designated as an additional day for which they don't have to come to work. A paid day. Further discussion or clarification?
Mr. Schultz, I think you could put that, I consent to it if you want.
Uh, please place that under consent.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Um, item F, discussion and possible recommendation to move Board of Education Committee of the whole meetings and regular meetings to Mondays with a consistent starting time of six P M. Possibly under consent. Mr. Russ, rationale?
Yeah, some rationale on the next slide, please, Mr. Stearman. Um, looking at, in, in looking at around our neighboring districts and across the state, a lot of board meetings are on Monday or Wednesdays. Uh, Tuesdays are a very heavy activity day. And, um, not saying that we've done it wrong or anything like that, but something to consider is, is moving a board meeting to another date, we'll just say Monday, better for our community to be able to come and be engaged with us? And it frees up Tuesday for the board and the administration and those who would normally come to board meetings to go to those activities, those school sponsored events, um, or community activities, really. We just want them to have community activities. Talking with Mr. Blaha and Mr. S- Sanders, there's about two and a half times more activities on Tuesday than there is on Monday. Um, so that was one thing that we looked at, and also remember, we did this several years ago, that if we did run into a conflict, the board had the latitude to do change, you know what, hey, there was, um, you know, Tuesdays might have been a choir concert where four board members wanted to, you know, attend that, or the board said, no, that's important, we need to move that. So we do have that, that leeway as well. Um, we just need to, you know, give time and that sort of thing, so. Uh, so that was the idea behind moving it from Tuesday possibly to Monday. Um, and then with the time, looking at potential six o'clock, uh, when we have a five thirty, the first Tuesday of the month, and a seven o'clock the second, or the fourth Tuesday, that there might be some confusion about what it, what we have, uh, six o'clock seemed, we just threw that out there as a time. Um, and once again, all fluid, and we can move that, adjust if needed, we just need to, to know that ahead of. Um, and once again, all fluid and we can move that, adjust if needed. We just need to to know that ahead of time for posting. Um, knowing that this is a a change for our community and our board and our administration. And knowing that we have our annual meeting already set on a Tuesday in October. Part of the recommendation to consider would be to start this in November. It gives everyone time to adjust, move schedules the best we can. Um, because we're going to have to move some schedules around on administration's end and the board could possibly do that as well. Um, so it just gives our community time to adjust and we can still keep that annual meeting on Tuesday, which we're not moving that one. So, um, that's kind of the rationale. Um, so the administrative recommendation would be to move. Um, board meetings to Mondays, the second and fourth Monday of every month. With a consistent start time of six P M. And we could make that change under consent. And our recommendation would be to start in in November for your consideration.
Discussion.
I'm fairly confident, um, from the conversations I've had with community members that a Monday. Um, meeting time would be more convenient, just because there are so many activities in the school district on Tuesdays. Um, for clarification, though, Mr. S, could you please tell us when the agenda would be? Presented to the public and when the board would get their information.
Yep. Um, so currently on Tuesday, for Tuesdays, uh, the board, I send a draft email to the board on Tuesday. I'm sorry, on Thursday. And then it formally is posted on Friday. So now with the move to Monday, we would look to move everything back a day. Uh, my goal would be get to the the draft agenda to the board on Wednesday for their review. And then finalize the board agenda for posting on Thursday and doing our best to get all that information out. Basically a day, a a day ahead rather than the Friday and that sort of thing.
Mr. Hendricks, I'd make a recommendation to the full board that's starting in November after the annual meeting. We move the committee of the whole and regular board of education meetings to the second and fourth Monday of the month with a start time of six P M. And please place that under consent.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Shulsey and, um, second from Ms. Lopez. Um, further discussion? I have a concern about the six o'clock time. I have no life, so six o'clock works really well for me. But, uh, I I wonder about people who generally from the public come to board meetings. I would just encourage the board to be sensitive to any input. I mean, the six o'clock work for most families versus coming a little later at, you know, six thirty or seven o'clock. But if it's fine for everyone else, it's certainly fine for me. All right, with that, um, I don't think we need a roll call. Just a motion. Um, and we have the motion. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Um, discussion and possible recommendation to save the recordings for Board of Education meetings and possibly under consent.
Um, one of the, you know, we are, so just to review, we are currently videotaping and live stream. I shouldn't say videotaping, live streaming. Our, uh, meetings that are in the Meadowviews Auditorium area. Um, and at home, you will see the the board and in the one of the, I think the bottom right corner, you will see the slides. Um, and it it's great. But it's flipped. I'm sorry, Mr. Steerman, can you clarify that?
Yeah, so he was just saying it's flipped. So you, presentation big, board small.
Okay, presentation big, board small. Um, and the question came up is what would it take to, um, record these? And archive these on our website for anyone who would like to go back and review what we said, uh, look at the slides. Um, and you know, weren't able to make the six o'clock meeting or the seven o'clock meeting or the five thirty meetings, so increase transparency. Um, so the the considerations are, you know, we have to, if we save an item, it has to be ADA compliant. Which means that we have to put in closed caption. And we do have that YouTube does have the capability. We currently go through YouTube. We have the storage all ready to go. And these recordings would have to be stored for life per, uh, the, uh, records request retention, uh, sheet. So the questions that we need to consider are, do we want to increase our reliability of the closed captioning because YouTube is not guaranteed? And as we know, missing a a word or two, i- i- it's a big deal, even if it's ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. We wouldn't know that necessarily because I'm not going to ask Ms. Markrin to go through that and verify every word. Um, we would know that and we may have a, you know, an issue there. So. We have looked into a closed captioning company and it is attached, um, to the. To the board docs as a possibility. Uh, the next question would be which meetings are archived? Um, currently, we're only viewing, we're only record, we're only live streaming our committees. And our 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 bigger special meetings and our full board meetings. Do we want to consider when we do board workshops? We usually go to the L M C. We we, that's more of a good workshop setting rather than trying to talk amongst and having community input and that sort of thing. So what kind of setting do we want to at least set up if it's the recommendation for the board? Um, because if we, and also do we want to, are we okay with our current setup? With the slides in the middle and the the board on the, on the bottom right. We currently, you can't see the speaker. You can hear the speaker. But you currently cannot see the speaker. Um, on board docs, Mr. Steerman did a lot of good work, modeled it after Holman, um, with a little bit of reduced pricing. Uh, Holman has a board room, so it's more of a permanent fixture. Um, so that's a consideration just to, just to continue a status quo, knowing that the presenter is not on. You wouldn't be able to see the presenter, just like you wouldn't do now. And then it would be, you know, do, does the board want to evaluate how this is going? How many clicks? We would be able to see how many clicks are on it. Uh, how many people viewed it, uh, as a generality? So it would be considered, you know, how much input or how much reporting does the board want on a monthly basis, a six month basis, a three month basis? Um, knowing that it's, it's going to up and it's going to up and down during the summer months. That might not be as active than in the fall in the annual meeting, which is on October eleventh, which we hope everyone can come to. Um, but so those are some of the, um, ideas that the board would have to consider. Um, the next slide, if, uh, the administration does have a recommendation to try this out. Uh, we would like to use our current setup to record and store. So again, we have the storage capability. Um, there would be no increased technology. Um, and we would, it's not on there, I apologize. We would hire an outside company to do the closed captioning. And there's also a, a option to do Spanish translations. For an additional cost, they're all per minute. Um, so a two hour meeting is, I can't remember off the top of my head, Mr. Steerman, do you recall? What is about, about six hundred?
For Spanish.
For Spanish.
Three sixty for English.
In three sixty, so for about a thousand dollars a meeting for both closed captioning, a hundred percent reliable and if, and if. If something would go wrong, the company that we go with for the, uh, closed captioning, if they miss do a word. They're in charge of that. It's not on us. So it's a, it's a hired service to to do that. Um, so that's another consideration. The closed captioning we need automatically, whether we use YouTube or the service. Is, it's up to the board and then does the board want to do Spanish translation as well? And then the recommendation, just to get this started, would be just to do the committee special or regular meetings conducted in Meadowviews Auditorium. As a general rule. And we can put this under consent, assuming that there's no increased cost.
Mr. Shulda? Uh, yeah, so first and foremost, I'm I'm in full favor of this. I think we need to do this from a community standpoint. This is. The transparency that our community is looking for. Um, I'm a little interested to find out from an error, error and omission standpoint, so when I, we, we work with our international clients. Um, we record YouTube videos sometimes from training. And, uh, they don't always get the, the subtitles correct, but it is covered under errors and omissions. Um, from a business standpoint for mine. So I I wonder if we would be falling under that same purview or not. Um, because three hundred and six hundred seems steep. It really does. Um, but that said, I'm in full favor of this. I think we need to, we need to come to a. I I think we need to find a way to make this happen. So, um, I let everybody else speak.
So, uh, just, just one quick question. So you say we have to keep these meetings permanently? Is that what you said?
Yes, we do.
So, I mean, so I know video is long term. Is that going to be, uh, it's not just long term, uh, long term over video, that's, that's a lot of data. And that's a lot of storage. Over the long term, five, ten years from now. Will that significantly hurt the district?
We, we have a outside vendor that we do all of our social media and virtual, uh, record rekey, record retention. So that's, that's why we have this service, so we don't have to really worry about running out of space. From what I understand. But we have to have a plan for that and we have our plan, uh, that Ms. Wilcox, we already subscribe to. That for Facebook and Twitter and Instagram, all those chats and posts, those are all archived. They may not be archived for life. Because that's a different record, but we do have that capability.
Mr. Branch Gilbert?
Um, was it, did I miss this somewhere? Was it recommended to? Put a six month timestamp on this right now to see how it's used and then revisit that?
That was an idea, just to, a- at least it gets it back on the board agenda to say, yep, in six months, we're definitely going to revisit it. And then whether or not the board continues that or not, but it really puts a, hey, we're going to revisit this in six months and then it puts it on the agenda. I'll look, Mr. Robinson, I can't do the math.
I don't, I don't, I don't really want to you pay for closed captioning if only three people in a month are using it, right? Uh, each, each meeting as a, so I mean, you know, if that's the case, that's. I I think we also need to consider a dollar per person that's using it. I mean, if we had a good thousand. You know, that will be well worth our dollar, right? But if only. Ten people are watching our meetings and only one of them, not even one of them would. Statistically use close captioning, it's not really worth our dollar. I just, I just like the idea because all we have to do is keep it on YouTube and slap it into our. Our, uh, on our website. It's really easy going from there. Um. Uh. I I think it's foolish that we have to delete or essentially we have to delete our live meetings. It's an extra step.
So are you, are you, are you suggesting that you would support this, but not the closed captioning part? Or are you suggesting doing the closed captioning for six months and reviewing?
Uh, I wouldn't support the closed captioning, uh, paying for the closed captioning part yet. I think we need more, I think we need more data to prove how many people are using it.
I see.
Uh, so revisiting it again in six months or three months.
And then deciding if we wanted to close.
So we have to do closed captioning one way or another. YouTube gives a free service as part of, right, Mr. Steerman?
That is correct. You, the YouTube is free and it's not that. YouTube isn't compliant, it's that it might not be compliant depending on, it's all computers. There's no person at YouTube writing down what we say. So depending on how clear everyone talks into the mics, background noise, side conversation, that all affects the quality of. The YouTube translation. If everybody is very concise, very clear, talks into the mic at a good volume, you get a really good translation out of that. But to know that someone either has to watch the whole video and we can go back and edit those two, but it's just the time of. Going back and watching all that and some, but somebody has to do that. Either we have to pay a service that's going to do that and either type their own from scratch. Or we're going to have to go and read the ones that YouTube did to make sure they're good. Um, could we try it for three months for six meetings with the YouTube one and see where we end up with? We could check it after the first meeting and see how accurate it is.
You know, I'm fairly certain that falls under errors and omissions too.
So we have, um, several options here. I think the best course at this point would be to have a motion that we can up or down. And, um, or amend.
As I was just going to add on to that piece there of, um. YouTube isn't right all the time. It's, and it's, uh, the sentence structure punctuation isn't always right and especially with. Names and proper nouns and stuff that it just guesses and it takes. Like ten hours to go back and redo that when I've done that for different events through the turbo before, which is a lot. And how much is our staff and time paid for? So I would, I would be in favor of of doing the ADA compliant, the the. Closed captioning testing out. It's, if I'm reading this spreadsheet, right, we projected it to be eight eighty-six hundred for a year's worth of meetings. Roughly, um, and so to me, four grandish would be worth that. Um, usage for our community transparency, if we test it, see that it's being used, advertise that it's being used, right, promote it. Through our different district channels and see how that plays out and then revisit that decision down the road.
Is that a motion?
Uh, it can be a motion.
Do we have to, I mean, we don't have to be, closed captioning doesn't have to be a hundred percent, right? I mean, is, wha- what's the percentage that we're looking at?
I mean, you'd like it to be a hundred percent, but I I think again, based off of what Mr. Steerman said. Depending on scenarios, conversations, how people are utilizing the microphones, it, it may, it may not be a hundred percent. And names like you had stated as well, so.
But I guess, I guess I'll, I'll make that motion for moving us along and see how that goes of doing it for six months, revisiting it. With the ADA compliant closed captioning.
Okay, so you're, you're following the, the administration's recommendations with the addition of. Uh, the six month review. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second, a further discussion and question.
Mr. Branch Gilbert, excuse me, did your motion mean that in six months we would review? The, um, closed captioning or whether we would continue to keep the meetings?
On YouTube. Everything, both, yeah, review everything, because then we would know usage trends and clicks and. What that's looking like in the community, if it's being utilized, right, for the, the cost that it's, it's going to be.
Would you consider? Changing that to keeping the meetings, keeping the recording of the meeting. Uh, going forward for all time, but just keeping the closed captioning. For six months and then reviewing it, whether or not it's a per click or are we able to tell the usage of closed captioning on YouTube? If we pay for it, how many people use it or no?
No, we wouldn't be able to see the number of people that just did the closed caption. We would be able to see the number of people who watched the video, like what the retention was. Did they watch the entirety of the video? Did they only watch a short section of it? But the closed caption, you can't tell who clicks on it or who doesn't. Um, and depending on how we do the closed caption, it will either be a button you can click to hide and unhide, or sometimes it's burned permanently into the video. And it's just always up there, so everyone would see it.
Mr. Burns Gilbert, I'd, I'd be interested to, to just let YouTube do it for the first six months and see if we have concerns from the community. And if we do, or or, uh, there, we see that it's not working out, we could either reconvene early, but look at this definitely at six months. And decide if we need to move forward with the, the third party.
Just saying, just without the closed captioning, but let YouTube.
Just as a, just to see how YouTube's, um, subtitles work and are utilizing, if we have complaints from the community. We can reconvene on it immediately and look at, at changing that, because then we're giving a chance to create a baseline.
Oh, I, I kind of like the idea, though, of, I mean, the motion included the, uh, translation in the Spanish, did it not? When you said ADA compliant or not?
For the ADA compliance, I believe, Mr. Bird.
So you're met, your motion did not include that. Okay.
And then reconvene at six months, see where we're at, see if we have any concerns or complaints from our community members and constituents and move forward from there. Uh, please, Ms. Koolig, yeah.
So just to, um, speak from ADA compliance standpoint, if we are solely using YouTube source, it does need to be verified. I do know we have deaf and hard of hearing families and students within our community that would utilize it. So I want to ensure that if we're doing the recording, that we are fully ADA compliant. So if we are not paying for the service. We will need to have somebody review it to ensure the needs of our deaf and hard of hearing community are met.
That was what I needed to hear, so I'm, I'm.
That's, that's where I was at of.
Okay.
Why wait until someone who needs it complains about it? Why not go right away and see how it gets used?
Okay.
From my perspective, this, we need to keep the recordings of.
Oh, yeah.
Meetings, no doubt about it. We need to keep it going forward. I'm looking at a community member keeps our.
a copy of our records. There are, they are getting clicks. No doubt about that too, but, and this is the more appropriate place for that. For me, it's well worth the eighty-six hundred dollars a month, or rather a year, rather. For that, I'm, I'm A-OK. I just don't necessarily want to review keeping the meetings in six months.
Oh, no, there, that wasn't part of the review.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that just the ADA.
It would be, the whole piece would be up for review and conversation, so yeah, that's, that's how I made that motion.
So we have a discrepancy here. Is that how you understood the motion?
I understood the motion that we would be recording no matter what, um, and that if I originally thought you were saying, uh, we would
Just in six months.
Exactly, yeah, for the, for the closed captioning. I was not, okay, so I was misunderstood with that.
So just to clarify, if there is a recording that the district provides, it has to be ADA compliant. So not doing closed captioning is not an option.
Right.
So in six months, the, we could consider doing the report to see the number of clicks, but it would either be our staff needing to review YouTube's interpretation or us paying for the service. So if there is the recording, we have to ensure we are meeting the needs of our deaf and hard of hearing community with closed captioning regardless of a recording.
So in many ways, the two, two issues are, are very linked.
Correct.
I have one more question, Mr. Brans Gilbert. Was your motion to include the Spanish, the paid Spanish translation? Or to allow YouTube to translate in Spanish for us?
Not, not for Spanish.
Not for Spanish.
I think um.
And that's still okay for if the Spanish translation is by you, from YouTube, we are still compliant?
From an ADA perspective, that is looking specifically at um individuals that are deaf and hard of hearing. So that would be needing to ensure either paying a company to do so or our employees reviewing it for an inclusive for our Spanish-speaking community. Um, it would definitely, could be recommended to include that as well to ensure all community members have access, but as far as ADA, that would not be a requirement. The ADA is specifically for the deaf and hard of hearing community.
And I, I think um side conversation, but that the cost, if I'm looking at it right, is twenty-three thousand per year. Does that include the ADA closed captioning and the Spanish closed captioning ju- just for the Spanish? Okay.
Yes, just for the Spanish and YouTube doesn't have a free version of Spanish translation.
Yeah, so I guess I would stick with that original motion, but then encourage us to find outlets to help offset some of those costs, so we can move closer to getting it translated to Spanish down the road, because I think that's another important population of our community that needs to be educated about everything going on. So that's a, not part of the motion.
So just on a curiosity baseline standpoint, does recording these meetings cost us any extra, assuming we're not touching like closed captioning, there's just, just on a, just on a baseline and then looking at our.
Like, do you mean, like there, there's a cost to streaming them? Are you saying to save, to saving the meeting and publishing it afterwards?
Yes. Yes, so just, so just to save the meeting and publish, publish it. That's, that's just the.
Yeah, there's a baseline cost for that, but we can't do that. We ha- if we save it and publish it, we have to close caption it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering. I, I, I'm just trying to.
So we spend roughly give or take three hundred thirty, three hundred eighty dollars every two-hour meeting to stream it for staff or staffing, essentially. So that's the baseline cost of say, if we were going to go back to pre-COVID, we did board meetings in the AEC and we didn't stream them. We just had, mics got turned on, people could talk and there was audio. That costs us nothing. It's people that are already here. Um, when we do streaming of anything, so figure three hundred fifty bucks a meeting. And then the closed captioning and publishing would be on top of that then. So those are kind of your three bumps. So three fifty to stream it. We want to save it and close caption it. It's double seven hundred, call it. And then if you want to do translations on top of that, it's another six hundred, so call it thirteen hundred. If I'm good at math, we'll see. So that, that's kind of your jumps of what you want to do and the cost of doing that.
But I believe to answer your question, Mr. Wells, there's no additional cost to upload it to YouTube and do all those things, just to, I, I don't want to simplify it, but it's a series of clicks and, and, and that sort of thing. There's not a lot of additional cost to uploading it and for storage.
Ms. Hauser, right now, how much do we have buzz, budgeted for um Board of Education meetings? Every year, do you, I'm sorry, I know that, that's just a quick, I was gonna I'm sure if I should text it over to you first, but.
If you give me one minute, I can get that for you.
Okay, because I'm, I'm for whatever way we can be as transparent with every member of our community. So if, if that means closed captioning for our Spanish speakers, I still feel that that's a valuable um asset that we can provide to our taxpayers.
The annual budget for the Board of Education is forty thousand. That includes a lot of that cost is the posting in the newspaper for meetings, also cost to run elections, whether that be for board members or for referendum. So that budget is typically used up each year based on um elections and public meeting postings.
So majority of this is going to have to be new money.
Correct.
All right, so we have a.
Oh, can I just make one comment here? So in the new school board member handbook, the twenty-two edition, section three verse, or chapter three, section four, it states that periodically reviewing the video recording to see how the board is presenting itself is a good idea. So we could actually use these board meetings as a self-evaluation tool if they're stored and maintained. In addition to the community transparency and building their trust and setting up some accountability. I mean, there's access, everything. There's so many reasons to approve this and keep this going forward regardless of the well, I hate to say regardless of the cost, but with the costs necessary in order to, to do this for the community and for the board, for the district, in my opinion.
So our current motion does not include Spanish language translation. If that's a desire to add it to the motion, we'll need to amend it.
Yeah, I can make that amendment, add the Spanish language.
I will still second that.
All right, so since you made the original motion, we will need to vote on that amendment.
Could we have a clarification? Could we restate the entire motion, please, just for clarification?
Want to recommend to the full board to save the recordings for Board of Education meetings um under consent with the recommendation from the administration to using the current setup of technology, no increased technology, um recording only meetings in Metta View's auditorium to include ADA compliant closed captioning and Spanish translation from an outside contracted service. And then to be reviewed and revisited in six months.
That was, that was really well done.
You forgot in the consent, if you want.
I'm consent.
We need to do that again.
Yeah, sometimes the words make sense, yeah.
If there are no further questions. All right. Doesn't have to be a roll call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Discussion of possible action to approve the donated Cataract Elementary School items to the Monroe County History Room Museum under consent.
The total list, the detailed list is on the board docs and this is just a summary. Anytime that the Historical Society would like to take a look at things, they have access to that, but in order for them to take ownership, part of our policy is, is that it goes in front of the board to make sure that everyone understands what we're donating. So just a list of uh wonderful memorabilia. Uh, once again, this is just a brief synopsis of it. The more detailed is in board docs. And it's our recommendation that you approve these and placed under consent.
Mr. Russ, has there been any requests from the Cataract community to retain any historical items?
Not to my knowledge, no. It was only the, the items that were the board approved.
Okay, the only reason I ask is I know that um Leon's school has a display of school historical items, but if there's not been a request.
You know, and once again, this is a recommendation to the full board, maybe after tonight, there might be someone that says, oh, wait a minute here. And then we could discuss that or pull it off the consent agenda.
With that, Mr. Hendricks had make a motion to approve the donated Cataract Elementary School items to the Monroe County History Museum uh ru- Room Museum and be placed under consent.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Sholz. He made the motion. Ms. Presswood seconded the motion. Further discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Closing items, announcements, upcoming dates.
Um, before we get to the, the upcoming dates, I just want to thank I know Ms. Presswood was involved with the, the Sparta National Night Out. Uh, what a wonderful event for our community, first annual. I'd like to thank Ms. Mansky and Ms. Eversen Riley for having a Sparta area school district table there. Um, we had a lot of participation from staff and administration and all all sorts. It was just a wonderful event, beautiful weather, maybe a little bit hot, but if you needed to, you could just get in the junk dunk tank, it seemed, anytime you wanted, or if someone would just come in and press the button.
What?
So, but.
It felt really nice though, right? Not gonna lie.
Yeah, well, I, yes, the water did feel nice not to get dunked by a board member, so.
I had opportunity, I took full advantage of it.
Full advantage, and so did a lot of little kids and other high school kids, which was great. Anyway, so that just a, a great shout out to our community. Our emergency management teams did all, a lot of the work as well. So just a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our community to come together. So just some announcements uh in dates are on the screen. Uh, we have a policy workshop on the twenty-second. We'll be looking at the five thousand series, uh, full board meeting on the twenty-third. And we have Dr. Finkel coming on the twenty-ninth. Uh, and then Staff Appreciation Night Concert in the Park. Um, we're trying to get as many staff members, the Pat Waters Band is going to be out there and rumor has it, I might be singing with them the first, first uh piece or I'm not a big concert gourd, but anyhow, you never know what's going to happen that night, I guess. So, but we're trying to get as many uh staff members and their families there. Uh, it's usually, I understand it, a large crowd for the last concert of the park of the season with Pat Waters Band there, so.
On a side note, the backpack program will be there collecting donations to make hunger extinct in the Sparta School District. And Mr. uh Fred will be trolling around in a little T-Rex costume. And then Uniquely Wisconsin will also be there that night as well, doing some B-roll uh for one of their upcoming episodes. Uh, and there will be a barbecue food truck, just so you know.
So, and then September one with the kids and then the September meetings as there. So I would also welcome, you know, anyone else to share. I know Ms. Presswood shared some things, but if anyone else would like to share any community or um district events that you've been to or you're looking forward to or the ones that I might have missed, uh, you're free to announce that as well at this time.
Mr. Russ, you have two more listening sessions, I believe.
Yes.
Community listening sessions. I'm not remembering the dates, they're in my calendar though.
I have one more listening, I believe it's one more. I'll check my calendar for sure, but we're up, I'm at the Cataract uh Elementary School tomorrow at four-thirty. I tried to get to the Sportsman's Club, however, they have trap shooting at five, so I wanted to make sure I got there before then. And obviously the, the, the guns and the trap shooting might not be the best area for our community engagement and listening session, so. But they're going very well. Thank you very much to all the community members. I'm trying to visit the local coffee shops to get as many perspectives as possible, but it's all about listening and learning, understanding different perspectives and moving forward as a community, uh, sharing the portrait of a Spartan that we've been promoting the best we can. Um, but it's just a lot of engagement, a lot of good dialogue. I- i- it's been really nice to see a lot of the community members come together and they might not always agree on, on what we're talking about, but very thankful for the opportunity.
Ready for a motion to adjourn?
I will make that motion.
Thank you.
I will second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.
We will take a five-minute recess and then we will begin the special meeting. Beginning at seven forty-five.